Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council Chamber for tonight's City Council meeting. This meeting is called to order. The microphones are on, the cameras are rolling, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilberg? Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We have a full house minus one. Fantastic. Leading us in the pledge tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to ask my new best friend, Gus, with the greatest last name in the history of the world, to lead us in the pledge. And Gus, you've got to, after the pledge, I want you to repeat your last name so we understand it, okay?
(speaking Spanish) (speaking Spanish) (speaking Spanish) (speaking Spanish) (speaking Spanish) (speaking Spanish) Okay, now, just for the benefit of everybody, this is a great Irish name.
Yes, it is.
And how do you pronounce it for us?
(speaking Spanish)
See?
(speaking Spanish)
That says Irish, right there, man. Thank you, sir, for leading us. Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin our business tonight, I do have some sad news that some of you may be aware of. Earlier today, I had the pleasure of visiting with the Maholland family of St. Charles. Some of you may have known Larry Maholland. He was finance director in St. Charles for 15 years, and in 1997, think of that, 1997, he became the very first city administrator in St. Charles. He passed away a week or so ago. His wife, and of course, the entire family, celebrated his life tonight at yours in St. Charles, and I think it's fair to say, certainly Mayor Klinkammer would agree, and I know Mayor DeWitt would agree, I know Mayor Norris would agree, and I know that Mayor Regina and even, of course, Mayor Vittek would agree, that without Larry, St. Charles wouldn't be what it is today. An extraordinarily kind, considerate, and just a true gentleman. So if I could just trouble you to bow your head for a moment to let the family know that we're thinking of them, and how much we appreciate and honor Larry's commitment to our neighbor to the north, St. Charles. Thank you very much. Item 3A, folks, is a public hearing on proposed annexation agreement by and among Dara Properties LLC and the City of Geneva, parcel number 12-12-126-003. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Alderman Marx makes that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Swanson. A, do you want to do a voice vote, or? Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
The public hearing is open, ladies and gentlemen, and this purpose is for those who might wish to speak about or to this issue, either here in the audience or perhaps remotely. Mr. McCready, anyone joining us remotely who wishes to speak?
No one here this evening, sir.
Anything for you, Steph? Nope. Anyone in the audience tonight? The Chair concludes that there are no parties interested in speaking to this matter, therefore I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Alderman Marx makes that motion. Alderman, ooh, Casarog sneaks in. Keeping on your toes, Mr. Clerk. Roll call vote would not necessarily be appropriate, but we could do a voice vote to close the public hearing. What's the city attorney prefer?
Whatever you want to do, either one works.
Oh, God help us. Voice vote to close the public hearing, all indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed. We move on the agenda, folks. Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening by anyone here on the dais? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk on this agenda can be considered as routine by this council. Those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Swanson gets the motion. Mayor gets the second. Any questions, any comments? A roll call vote is in order. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Item 5 passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $4,299,132.11.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in each council member's packet and on the city's website. Is there a second? Alderwoman Burkhardt makes the second and pledges to give the one penny. That is at the end of that statement, so. Any questions or comments regarding the bill? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
The bills have been approved with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. We jump down to items 12, presentation of ordinances, petitions, resolutions, and bid awards. Item 12A, consider ordinance number 2021-26, amending Title IV, Chapter 2, Section 4-2-13, adding one Class C1 liquor license for ExGolf Geneva at 1900 South Randall Road. Is there a motion? Casarog makes the motion. Alderwoman Burkhardt makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure. So, as stated, there's an application for a C1 bar liquor license that has been submitted by ExGolf Geneva, a golf simulator entertainment complex with bar. The liquor license would be issued upon approval of occupancy, and the Liquor Commissioner recommends approval as presented. I do believe this evening we have Brandon Meagle here.
We do.
And so he can answer any questions you might have.
Come on up, Mr. Meagle. I met this guy earlier. He calls Elburn home, former head pro at Aurora Country Club, head pro in Cedar Rapids. Now, where did you play golf?
I play golf at a small school in North Carolina, Campbell University.
No kidding. Is it known for its golf management program, too? It is. Kind of like Ferris State.
Exactly, Ferris State.
Exactly. How did Ferris get their name, their logo, do you know?
I don't know that answer.
What logo is it?
I don't even know that answer.
It's a bulldog, because the owner of Mack trucks gave them a sizable gift and said, "Use the bulldog on the trucks as your logo," and they said, "Okay."
There you go.
So, questions or comments for Mr. Meagle?
Yes.
Thanks for being here tonight. Can you tell us about your business?
Yeah, so it's gonna, it's a franchise. We're gonna have about 10 stores here in Chicagoland by the end of the year, and about 60 stores nationwide after this. My particular store will have eight simulators. I'll have a little food and bev, and, yeah, nice place to play, train, and entertain clients or customers.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And in terms of geography, near the Best Buy, as it were, right?
Yep, Best Buy in fresh time, yeah.
Now, this next gentleman, Alderman Maladra, is an avid golfer.
Okay. When do you open?
If everything goes according to plan, probably in under two months here, middle of November, I'm hoping.
All right. This one, weather gets bad.
Yeah, perfect time for it, yeah.
Exactly.
Craig, should I parse that with avid, but not necessarily?
Yeah, I don't know if his place will contain my ball, but we'll find out.
Alderman Maladra used to caddy for Chi Chi Rodriguez.
Oh, nice.
Remember that name? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you explain the technology that you use?
Yeah, so it's a Japanese company that's done all the technology. There's some overhead cameras that capture over 100 pieces of ball data in the first 10 feet, so I could go into detail on all of those, but.
So it can predict the physics and project that out on a screen in front of you?
Yep. It's seen thousands or millions of shots, so it's able to correctly predict down to the 99th percent what the ball's gonna do, what it would have done outside.
Should be interesting. I'm not an avid golfer. I will probably go there sometime.
Okay.
Alderwoman Ruby?
Right, forgive this question. Can you, I just am trying to figure out what you are still.
Yeah.
So can you tell me how you are either alike or different from Topgolf, because that's something I know?
Yeah, so Topgolf would be a competitor, yes, but I also think that Topgolf's competitors are also the Chicago Cubs or the Bears or something, where you take your whole family there, and in Topgolf, you're just hitting out to those little targets, right? So my place, you're able to practice in the offseason, practice all year round, but practice in the offseason, but you're also able to play up to, I've got 150 courses loaded, so you play simulated golf down to putting it in the hole. Yeah.
That's cool. This past week, some of you may know that Geneva participated, Geneva Boys Golf Team participated in an event, and there were three hole ones during, there in that event. One of them was, I believe his name is Chris Shaw from Geneva hit a hole in one as well. Pretty wild, huh?
Yeah.
Have you ever had a student come in to you and you've said to him, "Try tennis"?
No, I think everyone can be fixed, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Hear that, Craig? Everyone. Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of authorizing this license for ExGolf, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, congratulations.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks for being with us. Feel free to leave if you need to, okay? Item 12B, ladies and gentlemen, consider resolution number 2021-77 endorsing the 2021 Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Swanson makes the motion.
Second.
Alderwoman Ruby, we'll give it to you. That was a tough one.
Hand up for your work.
Yes. Any questions, any comments?
Do you want me to?
Yes, and just for your benefit, the City of Batavia is also considering this resolution tonight as well.
So the 2021 Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region was co-authored by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and the NOAA Climate Program Office. The resolution for consideration endorses the plan that documents current climate conditions, sets emission targets, calls municipal leaders to action, and describes strategies for successful implementation. I could go on, but actually, Mayor here has been intimately involved in the creation of this, so if you want to speak too.
I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We also have some interested parties I know in the audience tonight. I've stated in the multiple comments I've given to multiple organizations around Chicagoland area, this is not a fiat, this is a framework. We believe that these programs and policies can be adopted regardless of the size of community, and we believe that at the very core of this plan is municipal leadership, and when combined together, that municipal leadership goes a long way. We are the largest all-volunteer sustainability initiative in the United States, and it's likely that Geneva will be the first community to adopt this plan this evening, so. Happy to answer any questions. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Does the mayor vote?
Yes.
And the other mayor?
Aye.
Item 12D has been approved and adopted with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 12E, consider ordinance number 2021-20, annexing certain territory, specifically parcel 12-12-126-003, to the City of Geneva.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
And Alderman Mayor makes the second. Ms. Dawkins, anything else you need to add? Any questions or?
(inaudible).
Yep. Any questions or comments regarding item 12D for either Director de Groot or the applicants? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
With a vote, or excuse me, with a tally of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12C has been approved. Item 12D, consider ordinance number 2021-20, annexing certain territory, specifically parcel 12-12-126-003, to the City of Geneva.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
And Alderman Mayor makes the second. Ms. Dawkins, anything else you need to add?
Anything else?
Any questions or comments regarding item 12D for either Director de Groot or the applicants? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Item 12D has been approved and adopted with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 12E, consider ordinance number 2021-20, annexing certain territory, specifically parcel 12-12-126-003, to the City of Geneva.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
And Alderman Mayor makes the second. Ms. Dawkins, anything else you need to add? Any questions or?
(inaudible).
Yep. Any questions or comments regarding item 12D for either Director de Groot or the applicants? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Does the mayor vote?
Yes.
And the other mayor?
Aye.
Item 12D has been approved and adopted with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 12E, consider ordinance number 2021-21, amending the city's adopted comprehensive plan, Southeast Master Plan, by changing the future land use designation of parcel number 12-12-126-003, from commercial mixed use to industrial. Is there a motion? Alderman Marx makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any questions or comments for Mr. de Groot? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, and I would vote on this as well.
Okay. Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Item 12E has been approved and adopted with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 12F, consider ordinance number 2021-23, granting a zoning map amendment to rezone parcel number 12-12-126-003, from the RR Rural Single Family Residential District to I1 Light Industrial District upon annexation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes that motion.
Second.
Alderman Casarog makes the second. Questions or comments for Mr. de Groot? Sensing, seeing, and hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12F has been approved and adopted. Item 12G, folks, consider ordinance number 2021-24, granting site plan approval for a semi-truck maintenance facility and a special use to land bank 45 off-street parking spaces. Is there a motion? Alderman Mayor makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marx. Questions or comments? There was one comment earlier today regarding land banking of parking spaces that was addressed. Alderman Casarog?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering if David could kind of talk about the concept of land banking parking spaces, and maybe for us and for anybody listening, just kind of describing what that means and the implications.
Sure. So land banking is really planning for parking spaces on a site or with a development, but not actually constructing those spaces. For this use in particular, they actually have the hard surface area, but don't want to stripe it or landscape it, because it'll make it easier to maneuver the semi-trucks in and out of the garage. So if the property changes hands and those spaces are needed, it can be striped and landscaped. But in other cases where that particular use might need the parking spaces, they would reserve open space so that those spaces could be constructed for the next user, or if they eventually do wind up needing those spaces.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Burkhardt?
How do you determine how many spaces to land bank? Is that based on the square footage of the development?
In this case, they were looking at the actual office area, and they, so they parked the site for the office space.
Office space, okay.
But not for the garage space, where they're just working on the trucks.
Gotcha.
Right.
So that's the, the square footage is from the garage spaces, basically what?
Is being land banked, right.
Is the land banked, gotcha. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the dais? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll. This is item 12G.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12G has been adopted and approved. We move on to our final item of business, 12H. Consider resolution number 2021-78, authorizing execution of a public utility easements for the water main extension project for Old Kirk Road, Reed Road, Cherry Lane, and East Lane with Waste Management of Illinois Incorporated, subject to final approval by legal counsel. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I believe that was Alderman Bruno?
Second.[1404.62]
necessary and responsible for all costs associated with the project. Attached for your review is a draft PUE that was secured by Waste Management on behalf of the City of Geneva. As there are a couple minor outstanding issues, approval is conditioned upon formal approval by the city's legal counsel. I would just update that the, one of the minor issues, I believe, was resolved just late this evening, so we should be moving forward there, and then the other one is not related to the easements, so it won't hold up the easements. It's related to the performance bond, which we're working through that as well. So I believe we are well on the way, but we just wanted to ensure that we had all of those cleared up. But we didn't want to hold up any longer, so that's why it's before the council this evening.
Hey?
Sorry, and we do have Rod Stipe here with Waste Management if there's any other questions.
Any questions or comments for either Ms. Dawkins, Mr. Babica, or Mr. Stipe? Seeing none? Sensing none? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll call.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kassrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12H has been adopted and approved. Folks, new business, public comment, public comment from anyone in the room joining us tonight? Anything at all you'd like to share with the council, ask the council? Yes, Bill? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Bill Cale, I live at 2280 Bloomfield Circle in Geneva, Illinois, and I want to thank everybody for the positive vote on the mayor's and all of ours Metropolitan Mayor's Regional Climate Action Plan. This will be an awesome opportunity for everybody to participate in that. I had sent an email earlier in the day to everybody, I don't know if I followed proper procedure, but I would have a special request as if we can have that included in the minutes as comment. Maybe I should have sent it to city administrators instead of sending it to the council. They will want us to mention...
Mr. Cale's email that you were not received, but yeah.
I did not receive it.
See, there you go. I don't know what I'm doing, so be careful. You gotta keep an eye on me. I don't know, I'll mess things up every time.
Yep.
All right, it's good, it's possible. If you take a look at it and you think it's untoward, you can kick it out, but I thought it'd be nice in there. So, because it might not be in there, I just want to take a quick moment to mention just the two parts I made in that. And one of them is, I can't say this enough, is that film Paradise Fire, Fire in Paradise that was on Point of View, Channel 11, a couple of years ago, is stunning, especially if you're an administrator or in some ways involved in a community government. It's not just about the fire, it's about the community and how they responded and thought they responded, and, yeah, you watch this, it's just a stunning metaphor for the world we're in today. The day I watched it a couple of months ago, even though the fire itself happened in 2018, the movie was made in 2019, I thought, "Well, I'm watching an old documentary, who cares about this? I'm getting little feeds over my phone, this is the night the little town in British Columbia was burning down." You know, this is like a real thing, everywhere, hardly even makes the news anymore, but it's pretty awesome. So I want everybody to get a chance, it's for free on, you know, it's on that link, it's free, you can watch it, and it's actually, it's kind of, it's kind of fun in its own kind of way. Very well-made, I like, enjoy. I watch documentaries all the time, I slog through all kinds of stuff and go, "I survived again." This one, I thought, really was something I can have some enthusiasm with and encourage people to watch, and you're like, "Oh, my goodness, I'm so glad I watched that." The second item on there was, is quick and I'll be done, is the ABC News article about a Lancet report that had come out talking about how children in the world, they interviewed like 10,000 children, and how they're being concerned and worried about climate change, and it's affecting them emotionally and mentally in a degree, much more than they thought, because we usually don't talk about this kind of stuff with children. I know I don't talk about it with my own children, it's kind of depressing, except to talk about, you know, some nicer aspects of environmentalism and recycling. We stick with that and do what we can and make the world a better place. But they're hearing the news, they see what's on the news, and they don't see anything happening, they don't see anybody doing anything. I always like to think, you can get on the road, you can drive through State Street from one side of town to the other, you can get on Randall Road, go from one end of Kane County to the other, and not see a single sign anywhere that anybody here knows anything about this or is doing anything about this. And so this is what the children are seeing all day, every day, as they're on their buses and in their cars and being driven around town. They don't see anything happening anywhere. So it's for that, if nothing else, if somebody's concerned about, "Why are we worried now? Why do we think we have to do something? It's not bothering us, we live with environmental privilege, but unfortunately, our children do not, so this is why..." This would be an awesome thing. So that article is great, but that movie, you gotta check out that movie. And once again, thank you, everybody, for voting for this, and hopefully we can get some real work done.
And Bill, are we still on for Thursday night?
Yes, we are, if you're gonna show up.
Excellent.
We have you there, LeWong Voters, Thursday night, Central Kane County, we'll have a presentation on this very issue.
We're making a presentation regarding the Climate Action Plan. My colleague from the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus will be joining me and looking forward to it.
Excellent, thank you for mentioning that, too.
Thank you.
Promotion master. All right, thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Anyone else in the audience? Anybody want to talk about golf anymore? Any new business from the council? Alderman Kassrog, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This could be exciting with an introduction like that.
Yeah. It's kind of hard to follow up with the golf and the climate, but more locally speaking here, everyone is probably familiar with Ventry Drive, which is in the second Warren Me and Rich's Ward, street just behind Starbucks, north of Home Depot, I'm sorry, to the north and Home Depot to the south, running parallel to Randall Road from Fabian to Fargo. It's the number one complaint I get is the maintenance of this berm, and I don't think it's necessarily anybody's fault. 20 to 30 years ago, when the retail went in, they agreed to build the berm as a screen to the residents to the east, and over time, many of the trees are dead, diseased or now dying.[1479.74]